Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Monday, May 19, 2025. We do have some announcements. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers, please do not turn off your microphones when you're joining us at the table. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Here.
And Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak, and our first and only registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Lawrenceville. I really love the NOOK on Butler. Invite you all to visit it. It's very busy, very welcoming, even though you have to go online to get most of your information. Very, very nice town. Your counselor claimants are very focused on the vote with good reason. There is a primary election tomorrow. The vote is the core of the U.S.-American Republican democracy. That doesn't mean parties, it means institutions. But we citizens are not in control of our votes. So the vote is the central U.S.-American freedom of speech action, but no voter in any election in the United States of America, as far as we know, can check the voting record to make sure that his or her vote or their vote has been misplaced, lost, or misapplied, leached over to someone else that you didn't vote for. You can claim it, that's what I mean by claim it, but you can't prove it. No one in this room can prove that you voted for yourself in any election in any county. So I and the Global Intelligence Society, my colleagues, have asked more than 1,000 people in Pittsburgh City across nine districts, all nine districts, and more than 10,000 across the United States country, three questions to begin with, for people that are willing to engage, of all racial backgrounds and ethnic backgrounds and so on. One, do you want your vote to be misplaced or lost? Answer universally is no. Second question, do you want your vote to be misapplied to somebody else? Answer is, again, universally, no. And number three, can you check to make sure that your vote has not been misapplied or misplaced? And the answer is universally, in all more than 3,200 counties or county equivalents in the United States, answer is no. I think this is an egregious breach of our right to freedom of speech under the U.S. Constitution, Amendment 1. This is why my 2028 president effort has Initiative 1, which is vote-by-voter verification for whom. The county here will allow you to check that you voted, but not for whom. And that is to get the U.S. Supreme Court to rule that a citizen must have access to the vote record to ensure that his or her vote has not been misplaced, gone, or misapplied, gone over to someone else.
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, that's in Katy, where I was tires up on Befford Avenue. I repeatedly came down here and told you that we have a domestic terrorist, a woman that comes into the building, that beat the mother and daughter with the hammer, just beat another resident, a little, a man that was kind of heavy, and I looked, he's just small as me, and I said, "What kind of diet are you on?" And he said, "Cancer." This man has cancer. He was standing and talking to another resident, and this woman, Rashida McKinley, walks down the hill, goes up under the tree, and gets a branch, and comes while this man is talking to one of the residents, and whacks him in his head, just starts beating him in, and he said, "Why are you doing this to me?" Well, I go to the manager, because I'm upset when they tell me, and she says, "Oh, he has to go to, we can't do nothing, he must go to the police." And I'm saying, "If you got cameras," and she's been banned since 2020, 2022, I went up, me and my daughter, about her messing with me and some of the other people. This is '25, she's still chasing me, and when I go to the manager and say that I'm afraid, she said, "Don't say that." I said, "She's saying things to me." She put her big breasts up in the air, she don't talk to me like that. But some weeks later, they heard somebody say, "What did you say that my mother had heard some scuffling?" And that was her, Rashida McKinley, had our manager by her neck, but she's thinner now. The manager threw her down, they were wrestling on the floor, and she was saying, "Get it off of me, get it off of me." The manager said, "I did not hit her, all I was doing is reprimanding her." Well, no, she said restraining, I'm sorry, restraining. Well, I sweep down in the building, I've been doing it for years, and the manager came in, and I said to her, "When I told you that I was afraid for my life and told you that this woman is bothering me, and you told me that she don't talk to you like that," I said, "But she'll grab you by your neck." And she said, "Oh, no, oh, no, but there is witnesses, these are the citizens that told me, they saw them." And one woman was sitting there, and Rashida came out and told us, called all of women OBs, and how she's going to get us, going to do this one to this, going to do this and that. I'm trying to explain to you that when we, when I first came down here, we came because we had no security, we didn't even mention her. Then we got security, it's been a while, we had security. Well, Dwight Watson, our county councilman, was in there talking, and I was sitting there, and he was bragging about what he did, and I said, "We don't even have a bus." And he turned around, and he started swimming, he said, "I put your AFS out of county council." And I said, "No, you didn't." I was taken back, but I said, "No, you didn't." I am asking you to help me.
Thank you very much.
I know my time is up.
Is there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda, and our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, new papers, Bill 1769.
Bill 1769, resolution transferring the amount of $10,000 within the 2025 operating budget from city council salaries and wages regular to the office of the city clerk for the purpose of professional services.
That's my office.
Is there a motion?
Approve.
Is there a second? Second discussion?
It's just for my office, so.
Okay, okay, so no discussions, seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1769, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendations, Bill 1833.
Bill 1833, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of Dickey, McCamey, and Chilcote for at one-time legal services rendered for an amount not to exceed $12,503.75 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1833, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. We do have an interdepartmental transfer. Do we have a motion to approve the interdepartmental transfer?
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the interdepartmental transfer, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Transfer is approved, that moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have new papers, Bill 1821.
Bill 1821, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Agency for the purpose of receiving grant funds in an amount not to exceed $583,100 to support the auto squad.
Motion approved, brief discussion.
Discussion, second.
I'd like to call Acting Chief Devine up, and whoever you want to bring with you, Marty. What a gentleman, what a gentleman. Introduce yourselves.
Sure, my name is Fiona Kelman, I'm the DBA for our police.
Marty Devine, the Acting Chief.
Okay, well, thank you for being here. I had questions on a couple of these things, so I figure, you know, there's two or three in front of us, but the Department of Public Safety entered an agreement with Theft Prevention Agency for the purpose of receiving grant funds. Do you know what this is, what this actually goes into?
What the fund goes into? There is actually an auto squad. We have a fund that's set up. Over the last, how many years, it was going into the same fund, and when we had the audit and I met with the Grants Department for this year, we realized.
Your microphone will close.
Oh, sorry. When we had the audit earlier this year, and then I met with the Grants Department, we realized that a new fund number should have been established, and so this is kind of going back, doing our checks and balances, realizing that we need to get a new fund.
What does Auto Theft Prevention Agency do? Do you know? What do they?
So it's, it's supported by the insurance companies, so we receive money, which pays for one of our, the salary of one of our detectives, pays for overtime, pays for equipment, pays for vehicles.
Okay, so this is not like something in black and white that says, "Don't leave your car unlocked."
None.
Right, okay, gotcha, all right. That's it for me as far as this one goes, anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I know that Joey Kenya was there, Joey grew up in my neighborhood, so I know. And you had received a grant for this, and you weren't paying people with that grant, this is before your time, so.
We got that straightened out.
So I'm gonna let you slide, I'm gonna let you slide. Did you get it straightened out?
We did.
Because if you didn't, I don't want to vote for another grant.
We did.
I don't want to vote for more money to go into a pot that we don't see results from, that's what, so I want to know what's being used, and what happened with the last one?
Yeah, so we had a meeting with the, the people that oversee the grant, and they had concerns too, because.
They weren't spending it?
No, 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 yeah, so it was sitting there, so if you don't use it, you lose it, and we promised to, to staff that unit to their specifications, and we just, so we had, so after Kenya left, we had detailed a couple detectives down there to help out, to help.
Are they here?
No, they're not here.
Okay.
And since then, we transferred another detective down there, so we have two, and we're in the process.
Now have two detectives.
Yeah, we're in the process.
What happened with that grant money from that, the previous grant? Did you pay for some? Because Joey Kenya left because you weren't hiring people, and the money wasn't being used for the auto squad.
No, yeah, so when he left, we.
And he became a civilian and makes more money and is as happy as can be, and they left on Pittsburgh Police, that's a sad statement to me.
Don't give him any ideas.
It was a sad statement to me, that, you know, somebody leaves here and they're just so much happier, and.
Yeah, so after.
Because we failed to do our responsibility and our.
Right, so after he had left, that left us, so after he left, it left us down to one detective, and then we filled it via detailing officers.
Who was the detective when he left?
It was Derek Kuntz, thank you, Detective Kuntz. At the time, Joe was here by himself, Kuntz was helping out on the firing range, and then after Joe had left, Derek Kuntz had come back, and then we had somebody working with him.
I think I can just say the administration's probably happy they sent you over here today, because I was waiting for this to come before us, but I do appreciate that you are trying to straighten a lot of things out, and I wish that we had had you in place for the last three years, because I see the work that you're doing, and I see what, how you respect the officers, and that means a lot to us. Contrary to what everybody thinks, we didn't chase anybody away, but I know if people like to say this, the fact, but the reality is I have my text messages that prove otherwise. So with that said, I will say thank you for your work, and thank you to the officers for their work, and thank you for your work.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry that there's such a challenging time right now in the city of Pittsburgh for the police and for various departments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to quickly ask, so I know that this may not be, you know, specifically for this amount of funding, but I wanted to ask about abandoned vehicles, because, you know, I know in my zone, in Zone 4, I believe we have one officer, and I just wanted, I know there's some issues with storage and whatnot, we just, we do get a lot of calls about abandoned vehicles, and I understand that it takes, that it's sort of a complicated process, and if there's any, if you have any thoughts about what, you know, what can be done to kind of make this a faster process, or what the, what the, what sort of the pain points are around getting, you know, getting vehicles, abandoned vehicles towed? And I know too, I've also had situations with like boats, you know, larger vehicles, boats, trailers, that type of thing.
So boats are a little bit of a trickier issue, however, to answer your question regarding the abandoned vehicles, in the very near future, I have a plan to have a abandoned vehicle blitz, where we're going to hit each zone and try to clean up as many abandoned vehicles as possible.
Oh, that's great. Can we, can we send you, because, you know, I have a, we have a long list, between myself getting calls and also the office, you know, we have a whole long list. Should we send that to you, or should we send it to our commander?
You could send it to your commander, that was part of the plan, we're going to get a list from each zone to find out which, try to prioritize which vehicles need removed sooner, rather than later, I should say, and we're going to, we're planning on taking that approach.
Okay, great, and I had, again, you know, you hear things, you know, just, is, do we have, is there still, or was there an issue with where to, where to put the vehicles when, once they're removed? I thought maybe there might be an issue with storage space.
No, that's, so the vehicles are removed, they're abandoned, they're taken by a salver, and we have, there's a couple, I think each zone has their own, and then they take them to their own storage facility.
Okay, all right, well, that sounds good, thank you very much, that's, that's good news, I'm glad to hear it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, Councilman, what's your name? Coghill.
Yeah, so first of all, I love the idea about the blitz.
Yeah, me too.
Feel like we're back on the football field. And I, Marty and I go way back, we're old friends, and I agree with Councilwoman Kail Smith as to the morale of the department, and I'm not just saying it because of bias, honestly, Marty, you know, I've known you for a long time, and I know you know how to treat people, you're fair and you're honest, and, no, I appreciate the progress that you've made in the short time that you've made it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
With just the rank and file, it's just really, really great not to be, my phone not ringing off the hook because complaints about our Acting Chief, so it's good. I love the blitz, you know, Ripple's really good at removing vehicles, I guess.
So the, the traffic unit was moved back to him effective today.
Oh.
So we'll be able to take care of the problem that we had.
That includes the motorcycles, is that right?
I'll skip second round.
That includes the motorcycles, is that right? Is that part of that?
Yeah, the motorcycles, the entire traffic, yeah.
Good deal, good deal. You know, the horses are coming out on Memorial Day for me, their last, their last, I think.
We'll work on that.
City employees, I should say, their last parade, but, okay, that's it for me, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I'm going to bring the horses up for the next bill, okay? But for this one, I just want to say I love the idea of the blitz, and in our area, the Fifth Division has a lot of boats, you know, and that they, they were storing the boats from across the city there, and it was starting to cause a landslide.
Right, right, there's an issue with the stores of the boats.
Yeah, so I just, I want us to be mindful of what we're doing and where we're putting them, and I want us to start in, you know, order of districts, not nine backwards, but, you know, it'd be nice, they started one, two, three.
We'll get it figured out.
Just kidding, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Just do alphabetical order, like we do our voting.
Yeah, when I'm gone, they'll start, everything will be District 2 first.
Any further discussion? I just had one question. This is a question that was one of those ideas that come up from constituents, and now's the time to ask it, I think, because I hadn't gotten a chance to before now. It was an idea that acknowledging that some makes and models are more susceptible to break-ins than others, to figure out a way to somehow, I don't know if we even have record of that, or working with PennDOT, to alert those drivers to their susceptibility of break-ins because of the make or the model of their car. Would we ever do anything like that, or more general PSAs?
I believe we did.
Okay.
I believe when Chief Scarrato was here, we put out a public safety announcement, there's two types of vehicles that are more susceptible to being stolen, others, they're Hyundai and the Kia, right. And I know that we had talked, and I believe it moved forward on providing clubs, the old club.
Yes, true, yeah.
Older people remember the clubs, hand and nose out, and I believe that happened under Chief Scarrato, and there was just talk about doing that again recently.
Okay, great, I'll pass this along to the residents.
And then I can have the PIOs put out another public safety.
Great, we'll look out for that, okay. And we never work with, like, the scrapyards, or the owners of the folks who take that to sort of, I don't know, is there any, is there any work that we do with them directly to be on the lookout for that particular type?
So most of the vehicles that are being stolen nowadays are stolen by juveniles for joyriding.
Yeah.
And as far as, like, I think you're referring to maybe like a chop shop where a car was stolen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Since I've been here, almost 26 years, I've never.
It's not where it's going.
Right, it doesn't occur much, or at all, in the city of Pittsburgh, so we're fortunate as far as that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1821, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1822.
Bill 1822, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Vander Haas Gill German Shepherds, Inc., for the purchase of canines for the Bureau of Police at a cost not to exceed $30,000 over three years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Coghill.
I guess my, yeah, yeah, when you bring up whoever you want to talk about.
Experts.
They don't bite, do they?
No, it's my muscle.
He is muscle.
I think I can take him, so I don't think he's intimidating me.
The question's a little too hard, I was going to go like this.
Look at my backup.
He's mine too.
That's right, that's right.
All right, introduce yourself, would you?
Hi, I'm Kyle Nelson, Sergeant of Special Deployment Division. I'm overseer of the Canines, EOD, River Rescue, and the Mounted Patrol for now.
Oh, so Mounted Patrol for now, did you hear that? That's a tear to my eyes, Kyle.
Sorry.
It's not a tear in my eye, but we're going to keep them for kids.
So Kyle, it says, how many canines do we have right now?
For, the easy answer is 15. We have a electronic deployment dog that does hard drives and telephones, things like that. We have a bloodhound, and we have five narcotics dogs and six explosive dogs.
And they're out on the street every day?
Every day.
Is that right?
Available on call if there's nobody there on the street 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Robotic dog is not a robot, right? Is that?
What's that?
Did you say robotic dog? What did you say?
No, one of our, our first canine is, he does electronics detection, so if you have a cell phone that gets discarded, he can find the cell phone in the middle of the field.
Oh, okay, yeah, right. It's like a missing person or something, right?
No, for the missing persons, we would use a bloodhound.
Yeah, right, right.
The electronics detection dog is used mostly by the FBI for.
Somebody throws a phone, commits a crime, throws a phone or something?
You know, for lack of a better term, it's for child porn. So if you have a hard drive that you want to hide inside your house, inside the walls, or if they, a lot of times they'll bury it in the backyard, we bring in our electronics detection dog, and he will find the hard drive.
Okay, so this is 30,000 for canines, is that, how much, how much are they? Are we buying?
To replace a canine, to buy them from the breeder is approximately $9,500, so.
Okay, so it buys three.
It buys three over a three-year period. We typically don't need to replace them that often. I'm not sure where that money, or that distinction of funds came from, but it would not exceed 30,000 over three years, I don't believe that.
Got it, yeah. That's, that's it for me, ma'am chair, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. So I see that we're, well, I was initially worried, I'm thinking, okay, we're doing the canines, but I saw the canines at some events with kids, and I loved watching how the kids were first real hesitant to go over to the dog, and then all of a sudden, they were like really, you know, loving the animal and the dog at the time, and.
Who doesn't like dogs?
I'll give you a list.
Don't fight Tommy out like that.
But here's the thing, they love the horses.
It's true.
They absolutely love those horses, and I'm going to be honest with you, when I see them, I'm thinking, somebody cleaned up after this thing, but the kids love them. And when I see kids in Sheridan running to police, instead of away, or instead of yelling at them, like, a lot of times the kids are throwing rocks, cops come down, I send the cops home so I can take care of the kids because the craziness that occurs, they don't run towards police, but when they have, when you have those horses and the dogs and the cycles, kids are running towards cops, and to me, there is no better money spent than seeing kids building that relationship and cops building that relationship with the young people in the, in the community, and especially in neighborhoods where sometimes there's a little bit of tension. And for me, in one of my neighborhoods that there's a lot of tension, is when I go to Sheridan, I mean, I told you that people call me so that there's not tension between the kids and the cops, and it's just a great thing, so I think we should do whatever we can to keep those horses, not because I want them, because the kids love them, and I think, I mean, they, if they matter so much, and we're talking so much about building police community relations and doing all these things to build relationships, and having, you know, social workers go with kids and do all that, I mean, to me, they are therapeutic in some ways for some people, and I just think we need to do a better job at figuring out how we're going to do this, but I think it's incumbent upon us, we have a little bit of time left to figure out what we can do. Give us a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1822, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1823.
Bill 1823, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Bronner Group K9 Services LLC for the purchase of canines for the Bureau of Police at a cost not to exceed $30,000 over three years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second. Second with discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Again, canines, but different company, is that right?
Yes, sir. The Vander Haas Gill Company is in Ohio, practically almost in Indiana. The Bronner Group is in West Virginia, it's about a two-and-a-half hour drive. We just have them so that we have competing, and we have different options for the dogs in case one doesn't have any dogs that are appropriate for us, we can go and try the other breeder.
Got it, got it. Yeah, that's, that's it for me, that's good, that's what I figured.
Just briefly.
I was just going to say that we're going to, so we're purchasing possible six dogs over three years, is that right?
No, again, this, we will only, we typically only purchase maybe one, or maybe one or two a year. It all depends on the age and the suitability of the canines that we have working. As they age out, we replace them, we don't add any more people to the unit.
Yeah.
Right now, we have two that are available that we're hoping to put on in the fall, but other than that, it's.
Golly, purchase them as you need them.
Yeah, we purchase them as needed.
But this is putting the funds there so we could.
Right.
Yeah, got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Just briefly, there was an RFP for both of these, correct?
Yeah, there's an RFP, and I have it in front of me if you want to review it.
Yeah, please, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Council President Lavelle.
Just a quick question.
Sorry, thank you.
I'd actually never heard of an electronic sniffing dog, so I looked it up, and it's actually pretty fascinating what they can do, but it also talks about the handler getting special training as well, so I'm just curious, do we have enough handlers?
Do we have enough handlers? I'll always take more. That's the short answer. Right now, we, we have two, two spaces available, I'd be one for. I'd be one for a narcotics dog and another one for another explosives dog. So we're hoping to fill those positions in the fall. But again, it comes down to whether we can afford people from the zones, if we can add these positions, whether we can get the funding for the dogs, which, thank you very much, it looks like we're going to have the funding for them. But, you know, I'll always take more.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That moves us on to, be safe. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
New papers, Bill eighteen thirty, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with DuKane Light Company for the installation and maintenance of one pole and wires on and over city-owned parcel IDs 29B212 Romeo Street, Pittsburgh 15213, Council District Three. 29B180 Romeo Street, Pittsburgh 15213, Council District Three. 29B158 Bates Street, Pittsburgh 15213, Council District Three. And 29B157 Bates Street, Pittsburgh 15213, Council District Three, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen thirty, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Deferred Papers, Bill seven forty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Aubrelly for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the Home ARP Program for a total not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to recognize this bill has been held for quite some time. And that was on the advice of the, I'm sorry, the Assistant Director Kelly Russell, who I've been in communication with at OMB, specifically to community development. So just wanted to recognize that, you know, recent communication with Mr. Russell indicates that this bill should be ready to go.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill twenty twenty-four dash seven four nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
New papers, Bill eighteen twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a two-year sponsorship agreement with Clearview Federal Credit Union for the 2025 and 2026 Gingerbread House Display and Tree Lighting Ceremony at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. That's your committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Deferred Papers, Bill fifteen eighty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement with Pittsburgh Regional Transit for post-construction ownership, access, and maintenance of certain city steps to be constructed around Downing Street in the Sixth Ward of the city of Pittsburgh at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, Councilman Mosley, I have my amendment ready that I talked about last week. You should have it in email. Other members have it in front of them. There's very, very simple wording changes. I could have done a verbal amendment, but it just, the first draft gave the impression that we were giving away a set of city-owned steps, which is absolutely not the case. So we're rebuilding a set of city steps. And the agreement that we're authorizing is to encroach like three feet onto Port Authority sidewalk. So that is what, just to clarify, is happening. And it, I just want anyone to misunderstand the project. So I have a motion to amend. It looks like a motion to amend by substitution.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill fifteen eighty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill is amended? Any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fifteen eighty-nine as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much. New papers, eighteen twenty-five.
Bill eighteen twenty-five, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for thirteen hundred Gardner Street, Pittsburgh 15212, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill eighteen twenty-six.
Bill eighteen twenty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purpose of receiving grant funds from fiscal year twenty-four community project funding in the amount not to exceed one million six hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars to construct the Field House in Homewood Park specifically to fund the construction of the Field House Amphitheater and Community Gathering Space.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-six, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill eighteen twenty-seven.
Bill eighteen twenty-seven, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and Housing Authority of the city of Pittsburgh or a related entity for the sale of a to be subdivided portion of Block Twenty-Five S, Lot One Twelve, in the Fifth Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Twenty-eight Twenty-Nine Bedford Avenue, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill eighteen twenty-eight.
Bill eighteen twenty-eight, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block Ten K, Lot Three Forty-five, in the Fifth Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, McLaren Street, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our standing committee's agenda. We have some meeting announcements. Due to the Memorial Day holiday on Monday, May twenty-sixth, council will hold their regular and standing committees' meetings on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at ten a.m. and one thirty p.m. respectively. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Is there anything from members? Nothing from members. Can I get a motion, please, to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So move it. I will say, get out and vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.